All right, time for convening having arrived. The Senate will come to order with ask unauthorized visitors to exit chamber at this time and the Senate will come to order. I recognize the very distinguished rules chairman, the Senator from the Ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this very wonderful day in August, I want to report that the Journal has been read, the entire two pages has been read and found to be correct.
Thank you Senator for your good works on the Journal. Is there objection to dispensing with the reading of the Journal? Reading of the Journal is dispensed with. Is there objection to the confirmation of the Journal? Chair here is none and the Journal is confirmed. All Senators having bills and resolutions to introduce, please bring them to the Secretary's desk at this time. Clerk will read reports of standing committees.
Mr. President, the Senate reapportionment and redistricting committee has under consideration the following legislation and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation. SB 1 EX do pass by substitute, respectfully submitted, Senator Seabob the Twenty-Eighth District Chairman.
Clerk will read the bills and resolutions for the second time.
SB 1 EX by Senator Seabob the Twenty-Eighth and others, Georgia Senate reapportionment Act of 2011, provide for composition and number of state senatorial districts. Threw at the order, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the Nineteenth. Nineteenth. Roll call suspended. The President pro temp has asked unanimous consent to suspend the morning roll call. Is there objection? Without objection, the morning roll call will be suspended. It is now time for our morning devotion. It is, would ask that the chamber prepare itself as we begin our morning devotion. It is with great honor that I recognize the very distinguished Senator from the Forty-Third District to lead us in our pledge and introduce our Chaplain of the Day. Senator?
Good morning, Members of the Senate. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the allegiance to the Georgia flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, and moderation.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Senate. It is indeed my honor to again bring before you Pastor James C. Ward of the Antioch Lithonia Church in Lithonia. Pastor Ward is a wonderful servant in our community. He is a true leader, a true visionary, and in nineteen, excuse me, in 2004 Pastor Ward led his congregation into a new multimillion dollar structure in Lithonia. He's been active in our community as a charter president of the Easter Cat Boys and Girls Club. He's a, he's also been invited to the White House and has been there on several occasions. He's received the Chosen Citizen Award and he's also the father of three grown children, married to his lovely wife, Adele. They have eleven grandchildren. He is a scholar, a gentleman, and a gentle giant in our community. Ladies and gentlemen, please greet Pastor James C. Ward.
Good morning and to Lieutenant Governor Cagle and to Senator Ramsey, to all of us who assemble, it is great to be here, it's really an honor to be here to speak to this august body. And as a pastor who preaches every Sunday, when you come to a body such as this, you always wonder, what should I say? You don't want to talk down, you don't want to give pontification, but you do want to say some words that can inspire. The Bible says, "There's nothing new on the sun," and we do believe that, but they are different combinations because 2,000 years ago, there was not plastic, but the elements that make plastic were here. So I'm going to just reiterate a few things that you have heard probably over and over and you're going to hear again probably the next time there is a chaplain for the day. But as I look at our world, you are of course in the throes of many, many things, many things that's happening in the world right now and there are leadership now, there's leadership now with no easy answers. Folk have said that the easy oil has been drilled, the easy gold has been discovered, and the easy answers are gone for churches and for people who are in the political arena. The easy answers are gone. Some even say that we're in the post-developmental era, that we put a man on the moon, we built the Hoover Dam, the Panama Canal, we have cell phones, pretty much everything that we have seen has been done. The Concorde is now in mothballs, the Space Show is in the museum, I don't know if you can add more lanes to I-20. So many, many things have been done and what we're doing now is trying to sustain what has already been done. So I want to say our society is like two balloons. One balloon, we put so much air in that balloon that it popped. The other balloon is we are trying to keep the air in that balloon. We're trying to sustain services in our community, we're trying to sustain the tax base. So during these times, you know, we really need to of course trust in ourselves, trust in God, and do the right thing. So five things I want to just reiterate what you've already heard over and over. And these are, number one, we must remember that that is plurality of perspective, many, many ways to look at one issue, and the idea is that the best idea is going to surface and will survive. You can look at sports. Whenever there's a touchdown, there's a camera to the right, camera to the left, camera on top, and they have to look at that from many, many angles and many times go and look at that wasn't really a touchdown. But we must remember, and you do, that there are many, many ways to look at any one particular issue, but we pray that the best idea will surface and survive. Also, I want to see the perpetuation of passion. All of us are passionate about something, we are enthused about something, and sometimes the daily routine can make us lose our enthusiasm. When what I advocate is not accepted freely, I may just give up. One of the greatest weapons against good people is plain old discouragement, plain old discouragement. I've tried and tried, it didn't work, so I would give up. I still want to see passion for what you believe in, passion for what you are advocating, also knowing that there is a plurality of perspectives. And then priority of purpose. You were brought here because you represent your constituents, but you also represent the common good or the interstate of Georgia. So you have to always look at the true purpose, even as a pastor. Sometimes I can forget the true purpose of the church. With meetings and situations, the true purpose of the church is of course to save souls. So the true purpose is to represent your constituents and for the common good of the state of Georgia. Stories told, you probably heard that there was this grizzly bear that was killing sheep and they said, "Anybody kill this grizzly bear, get a thousand dollars." There was a man that was needed the money, he said, "I'll go kill the bear." He started out hunting the bear, tracking the bear, and then a deer ran in front of him, he forgot the bear and started running at the deer. After he tracked the deer for a while, a fox ran up, he started running after fox. Finally tired, disgusted, a chipmunk ran in front of him, he shot the chipmunk, came back home with the chipmunk. He started looking for a bear, ended up with a chipmunk, and all of us, if we are not careful, we can end up with a chipmunk when we really came to do great things for Georgia. Amen, I know you would do that. Next thing is this, the prevailing of principles. This nation was founded on great principles, that men are created equal and women, certain principles, and sometimes we make sure that these principles prevail. And sometimes we have to back up on our preferences and go with the principles. Now I've heard this, and you are here every day, I'm just an old Baptist preacher, but sometimes I've heard people say things like, "I'm not going to back pell, I'm not going to compromise." I've said this, I would compromise on my preferences, but I would not compromise on my principles. And sometimes we need to look at what are the main principles. This nation was built on great, great principles. They got them, they called them from the ancient Greeks, called them from the Romans, went through some Hebrew literature and called those the Enlightenment, they got some from the Enlightenment, brought them to America. These are great, great principles, that there are certain things come with just being a human being, inalienable rights that cannot be separated. Did we achieve them all the time? Of course not, but that principle was there. And whenever we did not come to that principle, we said, "Look, what are these principles America is built on? Let's go back to these principles." And I believe that you are going to do that, these great principles that this great nation was built upon. And finally, I'm a Christian, I'm a Baptist preacher, I know there are a lot of faiths out there, but we do believe there is someone that made this great universe, that built this universe out of nothing. And we must not forget the primacy of this great Provider who gives us life, who gives us liberty, who gives human beings intrinsic value. But if you would, and I know you would do it, remember the plurality of perspective, the perpetuation of your passion, the priority of purpose, the prevailing of the principles that made this nation great, and the primacy of believing in a power that's greater than any of us. Let us pray. Let us pray. Father God, in these walls where decisions are made that will impact lives for decades, we ask you to give wisdom. Each person came with enthusiasm, they came with zeal, they came to make Georgia better. And we pray that they can keep these ideas and not be discouraged. Father, we know that there are difficult times, the combination of problems we have never seen before, but we are going to trust you. Father, just bless this Senate, bless our interstate of Georgia, bless our nation. And when there is a debate, we pray that the best idea will surface and it will survive. Let us not forget the great principles on which this nation was built. When there's time to compromise preferences, let us do it. Father, let us always remember that those who founded this nation believed in a supreme being. The Bible was the school book for many, many years. And let us go forth in faith, let us go forth in enthusiasm, and let us go forth in faith, respecting our religions, respecting all faiths, but we pray this prayer in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, let us all say amen, amen. Thank you Father. This time.
Pastor Ward, good job. That was great. That was good.
Pastor Ward.
All right, dear. That's a good one. That's a good one. All right. You know, well, you were right. Right. Good. 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 Good.[831.82] All right. How are you? Looking good. 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 How are you? Looking, looking good. I can't, I... How are you? Good. Good. How are you? Looking good, looking good. Not that tired. All right. How are you? Good. Good. How are you? Looking good, looking good. Not that tired. All right. How are you? Looking good. 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 Looking good.
Let me have your attention just for a moment, if I might. Like to recognize the distinguished Senator from the 35th, who has some special guests up in the gallery she would like to recognize at this time. Senator?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a delegation of descendants from Sapporo Island, one of our great Georgia islands, along with their representatives and stakeholders of the Gichi Gula culture, and they will have a lot of them here later on today, but we have a few that have already come here that didn't have to catch the ferry. So the ones who had to catch the ferry won't get here till close to noon today. So I'd like to welcome you to your state capital, and please join me in welcoming them, Senators. Thank you.
Thank you. Stone? Thank you so much, Senator. Like to present our Doctor of the Day, and to do so, I call upon the very distinguished Senator from the 6th District, a gentleman from Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am actually pinching today for the Senator from the 33rd, who, as we all know, has just had knee surgery and unfortunately has not been able to join us. So always happy to do that for my colleague from Cobb County. Today, we have Dr. Walden Garrus with us today. He's a board certified in both internal medicine and pediatrics, a native of Marietta, Georgia. Dr. Garrus obtained his undergraduate degree at Asbury College and completed his medical degree at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. Dr. Garrus, yeah, we will not hold that against you. Dr. Garrus conducted his internship and residency at Vanderbilt University. He recently relocated from Nashville, Tennessee, where he served on the Vanderbilt faculty for 12 years, and he currently practices in Marietta, Georgia. Dr. Garrus is a member of the Medical Association of Georgia, a Fellow of the American College of Physicians, and a Fellow of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Dr. Garrus enjoys playing all genres of music, obviously is a fan of the outdoors, college sports, and spending time with his family. Let's welcome Dr. Garrus to our chamber today. Dr. Garrus.
Lieutenant Governor and Senators, thank you so much for your service to the state of the people of Georgia. We appreciate your work, and if I can be of any service today, please let me know. Secretary Reed, a resolution?
SR-13 EX by Senator Hill of the 4th, a resolution congratulating and commending Mr. Adam J. Kennedy and for other purposes.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted.
SR-14 EX by Senator Hill of the 4th, a resolution recognizing and commending Willingway Hospital on their homecoming celebration and for other purposes.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted.
SR-15 EX by Senators Hooks of the 14th and others, a resolution honoring the life and memory of Lorraine Walker Tyndall and for other purposes.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted.
Threw at the order, Mr. President.
Does any Senator wish to rise on upon a personal privilege? I recognize the distinguished Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate stand adjourned until Thursday at 10:00 AM.
Thursday, 10:00 AM, Thursday, 10:00 AM. Are there any announcements? No? No announcements. Any Senator have any announcement? Senator from the 43rd will be recognized for an announcement.
There will be no Urban Affairs Committee meeting at noon today, and Members of the Senate, I would just like to recognize Mr. James Lee, who was in our gallery. Mr. Lee waved to the... Mr. Lee is a retired restaurateur in DeKalb and Rockdale County, and grew up on his food, and he's here with his lovely family and grandsons from Rockdale County Schools. Please stand. Give them a hand for being here. Thank you.
Wonderful. Glad to have you. Glad to have you. Glad to have you in the Senate today. The, any other announcements? The Majority Leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until 10:00 AM tomorrow morning. All of those... Senate will stand at ease for five minutes. We've got a slight issue that just has arisen.